Good evening and welcome. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Butler Barlow, which will be followed by the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Let us pray. We pray tonight for the upcoming elections that will affect our city of Suffolk, our Commonwealth and our country. We recognize that we are compelled to respond as faithful citizens in our community. We ask for eyes that are free from blindness so that we might see each other as brothers and sisters, one and equal in dignity. We ask for ears that will hear the many needs of our citizens. We ask for minds and hearts that are open to the selection of leaders who will represent all people with genuine care and concern. We pray for discernment, for inspiration and for guidance as we exercise our right to vote so that we may choose leaders who uphold and protect human rights and justice for all regardless of race, class, gender or religion. In gratitude for the right to vote, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of October 15, 2025 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia as amended. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law and only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening in the closed session were heard, discussed or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Council, a motion is in order. What is your pleasure? Councilmember Williams?
So moved.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk kindly record to vote.
Motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Now move to approval of the minutes. Minutes from the June 4, 2025, just a little announcement here. Minutes from the June 4, 2025 work session were inadvertently included in our current agenda. They were already approved at our previous meeting. For transparency, minutes from the June 18, 2025 work session will be included in our November 5, 2025 meeting agenda. Approval of minutes from the June 18, 2025 regular meeting is now presented for consideration and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
So moved.
Your motion for approval, Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
Motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we do have two special presentations this evening. Our first one is Suffolk Sheriff's Office reaccreditation, which will be followed by a proclamation in recognition of National Community Planning Month. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Sheriff David Miles and his staff are present along with Smithfield Police Chief Alonso Howell representing the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission to present Sheriff Miles with his reaccreditation award. Sheriff.
Community Planning Month, that's on you. Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please read the proclamation?
This is a presentation by the sheriff, sir.
Presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Alonso Howell, chief of police for the town of Smithfield. This evening, it is a great pleasure that I stand before you to represent Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission. Four years ago, Sheriff Miles set out to become accredited. He achieved that accreditation four years ago. Tonight is the first award for his reaccreditation. What does it mean? It means that the standards that he set out to achieve four years ago, this award tonight confirms that for the last four years, he has met the standards that he has set out to achieve. Those standards are 191 standards, not 191 standards for four years. There's 190, I'm sorry, 192 standards each year. You have to maintain those standards each year for four consecutive years in order to receive this award. The easy part is becoming accredited. The challenge is receiving this first award and the challenge is to maintain the standards that he has set out four years ago and he just went through the assessment earlier this month to continue the professionalism of the Suffolk Sheriff's Office in accommodations with other law enforcement agencies across the state of Virginia. It means that you have a very professional sheriff's office here and if I must say so, members of City Council, it's an honor and it's a pleasure that I take this time to present Sheriff Miles with this first reaccreditation award. Sheriff, congratulations.
Thank you. Now we'll go to proclamations. First proclamation is a proclamation recognizing Community Planning Month. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, October marks National Community Planning Month. In conjunction with its observance throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia and the United States, Mr. Kevin Wine and Planning Commission Member Mills Staler is here in support of the proclamation. I also see a collection of our planning and community development staff in the back as well.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the proclamation?
Whereas planners can help navigate the constant change that impacts localities in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States and its territories. And whereas, the American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning can foster sustainable, equitable and resilient communities. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Community Planning Month in Suffolk and encourage residents to acknowledge the valuable contributions, expertise and commitment of professional planners to our community. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this 15th day of October in the year of our Lord 2025.
All right. How else can I say? Congratulations.
Thank you. I don't know why they're sitting in the back there. But we're fortunate to have so many of our planners with us this evening. What is often a thinkless job, we strive to do everything that we can to make sure we're achieving the goals set forth in our many planning documents. And these folks right here work so hard, both right out in front of the scenes and behind them, to make sure folks are living the dreams that they've set out to, whether they're a small business owner or looking to, you know, build their dream home, what have you. The work that they do is tremendous. I'm incredibly proud to work alongside them. And I know that the city's incredibly fortunate to have folks of their caliber working here in the city of Suffolk. So I'm a planning nerd. I celebrate Planning Month every day, but it's nice to be able to take a beat in the month of October and just remember the work that we do in pursuit of the goals we've set out is really important work. And I'm pleased to be able to recognize all the hard work they do each and every day. With that being said, I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner.
Brief, but to the point. Ms. Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, city manager. I'm Mills Staler, President Chairman of the Suffolk Planning Commission. I live at 1300 Me Drive. We always ask for your address. So I feel like since I'm on this side, I need to do it. And I wrote it down so I know where I was. I've lived most of my life right here in, other than a few years, getting a little better educated and spend a little time in the United States Marine Corps. Time flies when you're having fun. A little over 10 years ago, a newly elected council member asked me if I would consider serving on the Planning Commission. I must have said yes. I don't know why I'm standing here talking about the Suffolk Planning Commission. You ladies and gentlemen, all of the ones that appointed the eight members of the Planning Commission, we have eight serving members. We meet on the third Tuesday of every month, so that means next Tuesday we meet. Y'all beat us this month since usually you follow us. We deal with conditional use permits, request for capital improvement plan, the comprehensive plan and new plan subdivisions. At the present time, we have eight commissioners. They align with the voting boroughs mostly. At present, we have three females, five males, an elected chairperson and a vice chairperson. The background of these eight individuals is varied as their opinions. We don't always agree on the issues that are presented and we vote our own conscience. That said, we do have a respect each other and we listen to each other's opinions greatly. We act on the issues that come before us and we make a recommendation for approval, a recommended now, a split of vote and send it to council with no recommendation for approval or deny. As you know, your decision is the one that counts. Last but not least, we work very closely with the professional staff of the Planning and Community Development Department. And I don't say this lightly, professional staff. I got ready to bring a copy of the UDO, but it was too heavy for a man of my age. But they know this thing. And my copy has a bunch of stickums where I refer to it because I do follow up and make sure that what it's saying I agree with most of the time. Sometimes we just don't realize just how fortunate this city is to have these professional folks up here. I've enjoyed working with each and every one of you. It's been a pleasure for the 10 years I've been here and we thank you for serving the city of Suffolk. Thank you.
Good job, Milton. You're welcome. Okay, our final proclamation is in recognition of National Arts and Humanities Month. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, National Arts and Humanities Month is observed in the month of October 2025. We're joined by a number of Suffolk citizens that have a tremendous impact on our community. Joining us this evening is Edward White, President Suffolk Art League, Hillary Breedlove, Executive Director, Suffolk Art League, Tom Yenuzy, Executive Director, Suffolk Center for the Cultural Arts, and Gordon Jones, the Gallery Assistant at the Suffolk Art Gallery. Please step forward.
Whereas, the arts and humanities can enrich our souls, inspire us to chase our dreams and challenge us to see things in multiple ways. And whereas, the arts and humanities impact every aspect of life, including the economy, employment, education and shaping the American narrative. And whereas, cities and states celebrate the value and importance of culture in the lives of our residents with the help of public and private efforts at the local, state and national levels. And whereas, Suffolk Arts and Humanities organizations work tirelessly to educate and fulfill the artistic, cultural and commerce needs of our residents all year round. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as National Arts and Humanities Month in Suffolk and urge all residents to actively seek out opportunities to support the arts in all its forms throughout the year. In witness whereof, I have hereunto, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this 15th day of October in the year of our Lord 2025.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. On behalf of the Suffolk Art League, I'm Hillary Breedlove, the Executive Director, and I really want to thank your all's support in our organization with our partnership with the city and other departments within the city as well as with the Suffolk Art Gallery and the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts and Keeps Suffolk Beautiful and the public schools. I could keep going on, but thank you very much. This means a lot for our organization and seeing that the city has really invested in our community through the arts. Thank you.
adoption of the entire agenda as presented. And a motion to adopt the agenda as presented would be appropriate at this time. Council, Councilmember Butler Barlow?
So moved.
Councilmember Wright?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Wright. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening?
No.
Okay, we have no consent agenda items. We'll now move to public hearings. We have an ordinance to amend Section 31-717, parentheses C, parentheses 7 of the UDO of the City of Suffolk, Virginia. This is OTA 2025-7. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, what would National Community Planning Month be without Kevin Wine presiding at least twice at our meeting? So before you, Mr. Wine will provide you with a staff overview on the public hearing item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, before you this evening, this first ordinance text amendment relates to allowing food trucks in residential zoning districts and really clarifying some language that would conflict with that allowance. But City Council asked staff and the Planning Commission to look into the possibility of allowing food trucks in residential areas primarily in association with community events and HOAs. Right now, the ordinance is pretty restrictive and specifies that food trucks in this nature would only be permitted in a variety of commercial zoning districts. Additionally, food trucks may not be located within 150 feet of a residential zoning district. So we're proposing two text amendments that would rectify that and essentially allow for homeowners' associations should they wish to get a special event permit to operate food trucks. So the ordinance text amendments in front of you this evening as it relates to 31-717 of the Unified Development Ordinance would specify in subsection A here that while they are permitted in those commercial zoning districts, they can get a special event permit elsewhere. Additionally, we would be removing the language that specifies that food trucks may not be located within 150 feet of residential zoning districts. Our goal here, clarifying that food trucks may be permitted in residential areas with an approved special events permit. Special events permit is a process that's handled by our Parks and Recs Recreation Department. And it's pretty flexible in the fact that many of the regulations associated with that are actually city policy. So they would be able to get that special event permit and operate in residential districts, kind of on a case by case basis through that permitting process. Lastly, we remove the language that would conflict with that clarification that we provided as a part of your text amendment this evening. So the Planning Commission, at their meeting last month, September 16th, voted eight to zero and they are recommending approval of this language before you this evening with their unanimous approval. That concludes my presentation on this item and I'll be happy to stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing. Should you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone present that would like to speak to this ordinance? If there are no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance is being considered for your consideration and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I consider making a motion, Kevin, can you come back up to the podium? I've got a question. The last item under paragraph F where food trucks may not be allowed within 150 feet of a residential zoning district, is that being struck no matter where the food truck is? In other words, in a lot of neighborhoods and whatnot, this may not make a difference because, you know, the neighborhood is bounded maybe by a little bit of business up in the front and all the residential residences are in the back. But in some of the boroughs that I represent, there's a, literally, one lot here is own commercial business district, the next lot over is own residential, and it, you know, kind of bounces that way all the way over. Is this going to allow a food truck to now be placed if it's within 150 feet of a residential district on a permanent basis?
No, it would not because in order to operate within a residential district, you would still need that special event permit. So they would need to apply for that and get that approved in order to operate in that fashion.
But if the business is in a central business district zoning and it, right next door to it is a residential house, will that CBD zoned property be allowed to have a food truck there if it's within 150 feet of a residential zoning, with it being within 150 feet of a residence on a permanent basis, not just on a temporary basis? Is this going to remove that completely from the ordinance?
So a use of that nature, if it is not going to be a temporary use, would have to be a use that is permitted as a matter of right within the zoning district in which it is located, in this case, the CBD. The regulations that we are talking about tonight are specifically for temporary uses. So if it is going to be there in a permanent fashion, we would have to evaluate that and issue a business license and zoning clearance based on that permanent use.
Would this 150 feet be one of the criteria that you would consider when you decided whether or not to issue the permit?
There is a great deal of building code regulation that would come into play with a restaurant use and its appropriateness on a property. There's health regulations that come into play with food on a property. Restaurant use is permitted as a matter of right in the CBD district, but there are a lot of different factors that make this very location specific. So to answer your question in general, would a restaurant use be permitted within the CBD or within 150 feet of residential? The answer is yes. Whether a food truck could meet the requirements and regulations surrounding what a restaurant use would need to obtain from a permitting perspective, both from the state through the Health Department and through building code, is a whole nother question.
Mr. Manager, would you like to interject here?
Yeah, just to add maybe a little more to Mr. Wine, thinking about what an established restaurant would need to do, you would need permanent water, sewer, restroom, foundations. And so the ability for a food truck to receive permanent approval is unlikely. and so the ability for a food truck to receive permanent approval is unlikely, almost impossible.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Councilmember Rector, did you have any other comments, or were you prepared to make a motion?
No.
No motion? Okay. Councilmember Wright?
Yes. So I raised this issue earlier this year because the ordinance text was standing between my neighborhood and multiple neighborhoods in my community from having Food Truck Fridays. So I appreciate you taking the time to take a look at the ordinance and fix that. So I move to approve.
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Councilmember Wright. Is there any further discussion, or a second? Councilmember Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Johnson. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to amend Sections 31-606 (A), (C), and 31-606[683.75][683.75](A), (C), and 9 of the Unified Development Ordinance in the City of Suffolk, Virginia. This is OTA 2025-6. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Kevin Wine, Director of Planning and Community Development, will provide the overview.
Thank you again, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Over time, we take a look at our development regulations, particularly as it relates to your non-residential and commercial uses and some of those site requirements that are associated with those types of uses, generally a higher standard from a site work perspective. And we've revisited our minimum parking standards previously as it relates to what they should be surfaced with in areas that are located outside our growth areas in our agricultural zoning districts to allow some relief there and allow them to utilize gravel should they wish for uses where it's appropriate and locations throughout the city where it's appropriate. So we've reevaluating this again as it relates to some other uses that we've identified that would be appropriate to afford some relief towards as it relates to meeting our hard-surface parking requirement. And we've had some internal discussions about this as it relates to city-owned park developments, for instance, as well as those associations throughout the city, SYA being a prime example, those with large parking areas where asking them to hard-surface it would just be a hardship financially for them. SYA is an example here because they've been using an existing gravel area for quite some time. So what we have proposed and what is before you this evening would be an allowance for city parks and athletic facilities that are owned and operated by nonprofit organizations to utilize gravel, should they wish to do so, to meet our hard-surface parking requirements. Additionally, a second part of this ordinance text amendment for you this evening clarifies a provision within the ordinance currently that specifies exactly what a hard surface is. There's a little bit of ambiguity there, and we're looking to clarify that. The intent is to limit hard surface to asphalt or concrete, and we are clarifying that for you. So here's the provisions. I know it's a very small type. I think it blows up here. So here's the first provision. The director may permit gravel or similar surface to be used in overflow parking areas, low-traffic storage yards, the agricultural zoning district agricultural uses, and we would add this section five here, subsection five and six, public parks, athletic fields, and facilities owned or operated by nonprofit organizations. The second part of this, this is that language that I stated is a little ambiguous now, and we want to clarify this as much as we can, but currently states that all spaces shall be provided with an asphalt or cement surface or other surface with comparable durability and strength. It's really open to interpretation, and we don't want, we certainly want everyone in the community to be as clear on this issue as possible. So we are modifying that to state the original intent, asphalt or concrete surface. That is what a hard-surface parking area should consist of. So those are the text amendments before you this evening in a nutshell. The Planning Commission, at their meeting on September 16th, voted eight to zero to approve a resolution that recommends this text amendment for you this evening's approval. That concludes my presentation on this item. I'll be happy to stand by after the public hearing to address any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Once again, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. Councilmember Wright?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Wright. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, kindly record the vote.
The motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our final public hearing is a resolution adopting the 2026 legislative agenda for the City of Suffolk. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, on September 17th, City Council was presented with the 2026 proposed legislative agenda. Once that agenda is adopted, we'll begin the dialogue process with our legislators on our priorities. Nicole Porter, Senior Administrative Analyst, will detail that process a little bit further. She'll be followed by Mindy Carlin, who will walk you through our agenda one more time as part of the public hearing process. Good evening, Nicole.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, distinguished council members, and Mr. Manager. This year's agenda has been thoughtfully developed, and it reflects our continued commitment to advocating for policies that support our city's priorities. Following tonight's presentation by Ms. Carlin with Access Point, the next steps of our legislative process will be to schedule meetings with our state legislators after the elections prior to our 2026 General Assembly session. These meetings will serve as a critical opportunity to communicate our priorities directly with our legislators to seek their support on our key priorities. We appreciate your continued leadership, support, and guidance as we move forward in this important process. Thank you. Now we're here for Mindy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Manager, Mindy Carlin. I'm with Access Point Public Affairs. As Nicole and the manager noted, we did walk through this about a month ago, and so I'm going to move pretty quickly. We had some robust discussion at that council meeting and highlight the areas where there are changes, which are very, very few. So again, as I noted previously, we have organized the agenda into policy priorities, funding priorities, and policy positions to help us to distinguish between those items that we will be proactively seeking and the other items where we will be able to engage and advocate on behalf of the city. Beginning with our policy priorities, the first item, which we discussed the last time I presented, is support for strengthening regional transportation funding. This includes both primary and secondary road improvements, as well as dedicated sustainable transit funding. We've kept this relatively broad in order to give us flexibility to advocate any range of potential solutions to achieve those outcomes. Next in the package is a proposal to align our charter provisions with practice. There are three areas with respect to council composition, city clerk, and department oversight, and pending approval from you, we'll be seeking legislation to enable these changes to move forward. The next policy priority is to strengthen support for 911 dispatchers. This is a priority that we've had in the package for the past several years. It continues to be important, and so this remains recommended as a policy priority. Shifting to funding priorities, as we discussed when I last presented, we'll have proposed continued support for school construction and modernization, state support for fire services, as well as additional state support for forensic science resources, compliance with federal-led service line mandates, and funding support for Crump's Millbend Dam We continue to recommend support for long-term transportation projects that are listed on this slide, along with the amounts that we are seeking for each and what specifically that funding would go toward. And this, again, is consistent with our previous positions and what was previously presented. So shifting to our policy positions, the first category is public safety, and I know you will recall at the last time I presented, there was a significant amount of discussion around the importance of having flexibility to address our juvenile detention needs. So in light of that, this position has been elevated within the public safety positions, and so that now you'll see is listed first, reducing law enforcement burden and mental health crises, protecting public safety technology solutions, and the particularly, the particular area where there's a lot of attention that we expect, again, will be protection of our ability to use the speed cameras in school zones and work zones, protecting correction facility commission structure and fees, and the other items that are listed here. And I will say on the first item related to flexibility to address our juvenile detention needs, that just because an item is listed as a position, it certainly, and this is the case for all of the positions, it does not mean that we kind of have checked a box in it being included and that we don't work on it. And there have been, I know, Mr. Mayor, I know you've had some discussions about this important need that we have in the City of Suffolk, and so we've also had some conversations with some of, I've had some conversations with some of my fellow legislative liaisons in other cities in Hampton Roads, and so we know that this is an important issue. Going on to the next slide, transportation. These priorities are the same, or positions are the same as what I previously presented. Finance regulations, these are all about restoring, preserving, and protecting authorities and existing policy under community development and planning. This is also very much about preserving and protecting existing programs, current authorities, and then finally, utilities and environment. Here, again, it's supporting investment, support and investment in both farmland preservation programs and protection of forested land and protecting our local water management funding. I'm happy to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carlin. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
My name is Kelly Hingler. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Hello, Ms. Butler Barlow. So I'm sorry for my froggy throat. Tonight, we're talking about, I'm not contagious. I was out with a whole lot of very joyful children on Saturday. Thank you. It was good to see you, and they got me screaming. So I want to talk about the legislative gender and agenda in broad strokes. I happen to have watched the entirety of every meeting of the Senate of Virginia last season, as well as, had to go back like a football game, and watch everything that went through the House of Delegates. And I would say to you, overarching here, some of this, it's nothing for your consideration, okay? We do not have, and we have not had, since the state formed the State Historic Preservation Office in 1980s, okay, via money from the National Historic Preservation Act, and opened their own office, an actual, Ms. Barlow, where is your commission member for Historic Commission for Suffolk? It doesn't exist. Mr. Bennett doesn't exist. Mr. Johnson doesn't exist, okay? Mr. Ward doesn't exist. I can keep going, Mr. Leotis Williams. Mr. Rector has an overlay district. It is a very specific type of restrictive district that most people fairly well know because you have to ask to replace your windows, right? And we love our downtown, but I haven't left you out, Ms. Wright. You also do not have a Historic Commission member because none exists. And what's happening is we hire for all of these transportation projects, for all of our village initiatives, for all of our support on small businesses, for the Virginia 250 and America 250 coming up, okay? We hire consultants to come in and tell us what we need to know when we have, same as our arts and culture, thank you very much, right? Same for our agricultural. We do need the council to please step forward and make a motion to form a Historic Commission of persons in every single borough. Every borough has a historic community. And it's not just the historic community themselves. It's the history of Suffolk within that borough to give you delineation. Please, I beg of you. So to the legislators, to our state senators, to our delegates who represent us, please hear my voice. My name is Kelly Hingler. I'm a daughter of Virginia. I'm a United States military veteran. I am a clinician. I have taken many oaths. I'm a Christian and a person of faith. And please, God, lift us all up in Jesus' name. We must recognize in order to attach ourselves to funds, okay, for rehabilitation in every area of Suffolk, every person who has a piece of property that might get innovative credits, right? Uplift small businesses, be prepared for the America 250 as well, because there's lots of money for that, Virginia 250, in each one of our communities, okay? Recognition everywhere. And so I'm going to say to you, I had a lot more to put on here. And by the way, any changes in the charter is a changer in our local code, which then has to be held by public hearing, then has to go up to cities, towns, and counties at the General Assembly. I just want to throw that in there. So thank you for the technical changes, but let's get on with the public hearings as is needed, and let our state representatives hear us. Hip, hip, hooray for Suffolk, because we're coming with a Historic Commission, and we're coming with ag support and our waterway support. Thank you so much, and good evening, good night to everybody. Great for the hard work. I appreciate you.
We have our next speaker, please. If we have anyone else present who would like to speak to this resolution? Hearing none. This public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. Councilmember Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mindy, for all the hard work that you do on behalf of all of the citizens of Suffolk. I just want to remark, we just came back, as you well know, from the VML conference up in Richmond, and it's remarkable how parallel our legislative agenda is to a lot of the initiatives that the VML put forth over the weekend as part of their legislative agenda. And it's always, if nothing else, it's good to go to a conference like that, and I was telling your compatriots there right before the meeting, it's good to go to a meeting like that and talk to people from all over the state and recognize that very, very few of our problems are unique. They're shared by many communities all across the state, from homelessness to affordable housing to transportation to the whole nine yards. One of the little differences that I did notice was that under the speed cameras and whatnot, I noticed that the VML is actually advocating allowing them in front of universities and colleges as well. But thank you again for your efforts, and I hope we're as successful this year as we always are. Thank you again. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve it, if that's what...
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Councilmember Rector. Any other questions, comments, or a second? Councilmember Williams?
Second, ma'am.
We have a second from Councilmember Williams. Vice Mayor Ward?
I'm the second.
Oh, you're the second, okay. All right, any other comments? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion's been approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next ordinance is an ordinance establishing an arts and cultural district in the city of Suffolk. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the 2021 Downtown Master Plan features a number of initiatives and recommendations. As we've highlighted to City Council, a number of these accomplishments have taken place. For your consideration, this evening is another one of these recommendations from the Master Plan. To provide you with more information and an ordinance for your consideration of the establishment of an arts and cultural district is our downtown, in our downtown is Lisa Bleakley, our Downtown Development Manager. Good evening, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Lisa Bleakley, and I serve as your Downtown Development Manager. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for your support of all the downtown initiatives and of the Downtown Master Plan. I look forward to continuing the work in my new role. Tonight, I'm here to present the proposed Arts and Cultural District Ordinance for Downtown Suffolk for your consideration and adoption. Well, the timing couldn't be better, with October being Arts and Humanities Month, could it? The Downtown Advisory Committee, appointed by City Council, has been working with city staff on this initiative as recommended in the Downtown Master Plan. The committee, many members who are here tonight, has provided a unanimous recommendation that City Council adopt this Arts and Cultural District and its enacting ordinance. This initiative is designed to strengthen our downtown core through creative and cultural investment, helping make Suffolk a regional destination for the arts, small businesses, and community vibrancy. So let's start with a summary of the ordinance itself. The proposed district would include the downtown influence area, including the downtown core, which is consistent with the boundaries defined in the Downtown Master Plan. At the crux of this ordinance are incentives designed to attract arts and culturally-based businesses to downtown. Businesses eligible for incentives include those engaged in the arts, culture, entertainment, or creative industries. Some examples include, but are not limited to, galleries, performance venues, artisan studios, and creative service firms. The ordinance references the North American Industry Classification System for the specific business classifications. It is important to note here that there are businesses which will complement a healthy downtown ecosystem. This ordinance would not prevent any business from being located downtown, provided the business activity is permitted in the zone. Being eligible for the incentives that this ordinance provides for, that would be a separate matter. The ordinance offers two key financial incentives. The first, relief on the B-pole, or the Business Professional and Occupational License Tax, which is based on gross receipts. This would be a reimbursement up to $1,500 for year one and $750 for year two. The second would be relief on permit fees, such as building, plan, and site review, and inspection permit fees. This would be a reimbursement up to $1,500 for year one and $750 for year two. Businesses will also have access to facade and small business grants as administered by the Economic Development Authority. Together, these incentives are meant to reduce barriers to entry and encourage growth within the arts and cultural sector. This map shows the proposed geographical boundaries. As stated in the overview, the district will include the downtown influence and core areas. While this ordinance is downtown-centric, the Code of Virginia does not restrict the number of such districts that can be established. We expect other areas of the city to express interest in establishing an arts and cultural district, once it is proven to be successful here in the city. This model can be replicated with the downtown version practically serving as a pilot for future districts within the city. The proposed arts and cultural district aligns with our adopted planning documents. The Downtown Master Plan, which was updated in 2021, calls for creation of an arts or creative district and enhanced placemaking opportunities. The ordinance also supports goals of the Suffolk 2045 Comp Plan to revitalize the downtown core, focus growth within existing infrastructure, and promote a creative mixed-use economy. The initiative brings that vision to life, supporting a vibrant, arts-oriented downtown. Lastly, the Downtown Advisory Committee fully endorses this initiative and voted unanimously to recommend that City Council adopt the Arts and Cultural District and its enacting ordinance. From an economic development perspective, we expect this district to provide an avenue for stimulating new business formation, encouraging private investment, increasing property values, and boosting tourism and creative job creation. From a community standpoint, we anticipate greater civic pride and engagement, improved perceptions of safety, stronger sense of place, and inclusivity. Overall, it supports a thriving, creative, and connected community. There's a lot on this slide to take in. I know you all have copies in front of you, hopefully, but just as a brief overview, this is meant to show that similar districts have achieved remarkable results across Virginia. Research indicates that in Richmond, the Broad Street Arts District has realized $10 million plus in adaptive reuse and small business growth. Closer to home, the Norfolk Neon District touts 30-plus rehabilitated buildings and a vibrant arts environment. In Williamsburg, artisan retail has gained traction, and the synergy is apparent in their tourism metrics. Virginia Beach, with their Vibe District, has established 70, over 70, creative businesses in the past 10 years, and once empty storefronts are now alive with commerce. Over in southwest Virginia, the town of Rocky Mount focuses on arts and music-centered offerings, which has resulted in an economic revival for that small town. Whether large or small, communities have shown successes with arts and cultural districts. Suffolk can build on this proven model while reflecting on our own local identity. So just some key takeaways I'd like to leave you with tonight. Arts and cultural districts have consistently proven to be catalysts for downtown revitalization. They breathe new life into underutilized areas and strengthen community engagement. Cities that implement these districts often see measurable gains in economic performance, including increased business investment, higher retail sales, and rising property values, all of which contribute to a stronger local tax base. Beyond economics, these districts help build a creative economy by attracting entrepreneurs, supporting small businesses, and retaining local talent. Another key benefit is in historic preservation. Through the adaptive reuse of older buildings, these projects protect local heritage while reducing redevelopment costs and environmental impact. Lastly, successful models from other cities show that these outcomes are both scalable and sustainable. With thoughtful implementation, Suffolk can leverage similar strategies to drive economic growth, cultural vitality, and long-term downtown renewal. We are requesting City Council adoption of the ordinance establishing the Downtown Arts and Cultural District. Upon adoption, the Economic Development Authority will implement the incentives, and the Department of Economic Development will work with Downtown Development for applications and the marketing of this program. If adopted tonight, we're ready, we hope to be ready to launch early next calendar year and have a one-year progress report ready for your review by June of 2027. In conclusion, this arts and cultural district represents a strategic, community-centered approach to downtown revitalization. That was recommended in the Downtown Master Plan. It supports local artists, fosters small business, enhances tourism, and breathes new life into our historic downtown, reinforcing Suffolk's vision for a vibrant and creative future. Thanks to those who have come out and support tonight, and thank you, City Council, for your time and consideration for support and adoption of this proposed ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hillgas. Council, questions, comments, or a motion? Councilmember Wright.
I have a question. How are current businesses who are not qualified, are businesses, going to be impacted by the classification?
So businesses that are already located in downtown but, but would not qualify for incentives under this ordinance?
Correct.
There should be no impact at all.
Okay.
They're still, if they're allowed to be down there, which I assume they would be if they're down there operating, they will continue on. Now, what I would say, that as we progress with this, and if it is successful as we expect it to be, they're going to be positively impacted
Okay.
by increased foot traffic, i.e., increased sales, that sort of thing, but no negative impacts that we've been able to see.
Okay. Thank you.
Council, questions, comments, or a motion? Councilmember Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Lisa, thank you for that excellent presentation. Just a couple of comments. You did such a good job in your presentation, you've stolen a lot of my thunder. But I just want to emphasize a couple of things. Number, you know, the first thing is, we are in no way inventing the wheel. We are just simply borrowing a concept that has been adopted in many cities across the Commonwealth and have been proven to be very successful in those cities across the Commonwealth. As a matter of fact, just recently in the, and you cited some of the statistics, but in the Coastal Virginia Magazine just recently released, they did an article where Virginia Beach is celebrating the 10-year anniversary of their Vibe District, and the economic impact that it has had on that district is truly impressive, both in the number of new businesses that have come to that area, the increase in the tax base that is, that they have seen, as well as the increase in the assessed value of the properties. Plus, it just generally makes that area a much more attractive place for people to want to come to shop, eat, and do whatever, whatever else. So I would encourage this council to adopt this thing. It's a logical next step for what was in our Downtown Master Plan. It fits in beautifully with the comprehensive plan, and I think we'll continue the theme that we've expressed with Suffolk, that, you know, we're open, and we want Suffolk to become not a pass-through place, but a destination for people to come to. So with that, I will make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance.
Okay. We got a motion for approval from Councilmember Wright. Okay, Councilmember Johnson.
And I'm going to second it, but wait a minute. It's exciting. It's exciting for our city. It's exciting for our downtown. We know this is just one of many next logical steps. So you see all the people here that are in support of this. It's, it's pretty remarkable that they came out tonight just to show the support to our city. So for that reason, I, I would like to second the motion, and I encourage us to move forward with this plan and every other plan we can come up with to make our downtown better than what it, what it could be.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval made by Councilmember Rector, seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Before we vote, I would like to just add that this is obviously a very, very, thank you very much for your presentation, your hard work. This is a very, very welcome addition to the advancement and continued revitalization of downtown, which will help all our Suffolk residents in multiple ways, as everybody has mentioned, economically, culturally, and stimulating what we want to happen downtown. I want to thank the staff for preparing the ordinance. I want to thank the Downtown Advisory Board for lending your input. Obviously, we are, are very concerned, not concerned, we are very interested in what comes out of that committee, what you've been able to accomplish and then what you've been able to provide by offering the diversity that you do have on that board with folks that are invested in our downtown. So with that being said, like I said, we got a motion on the floor for approval. If there's no other comments, please prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion's been approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have one resolution this evening, which is a resolution of the City's Council of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, to make the determination required by Section 36-55.30 to B of the Code of Virginia, in order for the Virginia Housing Development Authority to finance Peanut Crossing Phase Two. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, at your September 17th, 2025 meeting, you approved a resolution supporting Phase Two of Peanut Crossing, specifically supporting their commitment to setting aside units for tenants that are at or below the area median income. The developers requested a new resolution to take the place of the previously approved resolution that fits the format of the Virginia Housing Development Authority. So that is the resolution in front of you today. Should you have any questions? Dina Tremere, the Assistant Director of Economic Development, is also with us, who maybe could answer questions regarding the development.
Council, a resolution has been presented for your consideration. What is your pleasure? Councilmember Williams.
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve. It's a great project. Very impressed with what they've started thus far. It's a good product, like I said, and again, I approve, I will, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Wright?
Second.
Got a second from Councilmember Wright. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, kindly record the vote.
The motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have a motion to schedule a City Council work session on Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, at 4:00 p.m., unless canceled by the mayor and the interim city manager, and a motion would be in order to that effect. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
So moved.
Got a motion for approval, Councilmember Butler Barlow, Vice Mayor Ward.
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
Um, yes, we do have non-agenda speakers, but just to clarify, we don't have any staff reports this evening. Guidelines for non-agenda speakers are outlined in the City Code, Section 2-96, and permit each speaker five minutes to address City Council. Members addressing City Council will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, engage in personal attacks, use profanity or vulgar language. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated.
Do we have anyone signed up? Madam Clerk?
Yes, the first speaker is William Webb, 810, Dumville Avenue, representing self,
Mayor Doeman, Vice Mayor Ward, members of council, and fellow residents. Good evening. I'm here tonight to discuss affordable housing in the city of Suffolk. Suffolk's housing policy decisions must start reflecting the needs of Suffolk's working families, not just the needs of developers. Before you this evening was a resolution that raised the income set-asides for Peanut Crossing Phase Two for 40% of the units to an income threshold at or below 100% of the area median income, being $90,300, with the other 60% of the units at or below 150% AMI, meaning households earning over $135,000 a year. Let's keep in mind that the AMI, the area median income, is for the entire Hampton Roads region, not just Suffolk. According to the 2026 budget that you passed in the spring, the household median income for the city of Suffolk is only $81,154, a full $9,000 below the AMI for the region. Raising income limits doesn't create affordability. It pushes rents higher and tilts the housing mix toward higher-income tenants, while the very workers who keep our schools, restaurants, shipyards, and hospitals running are being left behind. Let's be honest, this is not affordable housing. This is market-rate housing repackaged under the label workforce housing. Meanwhile, the people who are actually needing affordable housing in Suffolk, those earning below 60% AMI, often $35,000 to $55,000, are being priced out of the very city that they call home. This resolution and the associated resolution from last month are continuing to put upward pressure on housing. Higher incomes, higher rents, instead of focusing on true affordability. pressure on housing, higher incomes, higher rents, instead of focusing on true affordability. We need solutions and policies that work, that truly make affordability possible. Just a couple of years ago, Richmond faced a similar crisis. The graffiti on their walls said it all, rent too high, spray painted all across the city. Instead of loosening definitions, Richmond created the Affordable Housing Performance Grant Program. Here's what they did. When a developer builds affordable units targeted mostly at or below residents at the sixty percent AMI threshold, Richmond refunds the increase in real estate taxes that comes from the new development and construction. The developer still pays full taxes, but the city gives back the incremental increase as a grant, so long as the units stay affordable and well-maintained. In just two years, Richmond approved twenty-five projects totaling more than three thousand, two hundred affordable units. The affordability is verified annually and locked in for thirty years as part of the agreement, and it doesn't cost the city any upfront money, only a portion of future tax growth from properties that might otherwise sit vacant. That's the kind of creativity that Suffolk should be looking at, one that keeps rents down and creates real affordability without draining our budget. So what can Suffolk do? We can replicate the successes in Richmond by, one, creating a Suffolk Affordable Housing Performance Grant Program for projects targeted at those making around the sixty percent AMI; two, by supporting community land trusts and adaptive reuse of vacant commercial spaces for affordable rentals, similar to what Mr. Taylor spoke about at the last meeting; three, by revising our development guidelines to at least encourage a share of affordable units at any large new developments; and four, by creating a Suffolk Affordable Housing Construction Program that waives certain connection fees for builders who agree to affordable housing price controls for their product. These steps would produce real results, not more high-income workforce projects that miss the mark. Counsel, the ball is in your court in regards to affordable housing. Will we continue to redefine affordable housing upwards until it serves only those that are already thriving? Or will we commit to ensuring that the people who teach our children, care for our families, and keep our city running can afford to call Suffolk home? Let's stop calling market-rate projects affordable. Let's start building affordability that is real, measurable, and lasting. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Kelly Hangler, nine-three-four-five Eclipse Drive, representing the Critten and Eclipse Heritage Civic League, regarding significant land use and transportation safety.
I'm looking, ladies and gentlemen, to see that it says my time this time. If I sound pressured in my speech, please forgive me. I had a loss on Monday, and then I got notification today of another loss, meaning someone passing. But I had to come up tonight, relevant to our business transaction here as a community. We are a heartfelt community. I don't know what else to say about Suffolk but that. When you see me come forward with business before you because I'm looking at our city and its greatness and where it can be, and we have so many citizens who are doing everything they can, they truly are. We have a new wave of children, by the way, which is very exciting, okay? And they're asking questions, where can we do this, where can we do this? We're stuck back in twenty eighteen. That's why I came to talk to you tonight, okay? Because when it comes to public services, as my understanding, when it comes to developments that would come before planning commission and then come before council, that significant land use is narrow only to residential. We haven't built a new nursing facility in Suffolk in a while, and one is coming up on the agenda for the city planning commission meeting, okay, on the twenty-first. So I understand it may seem a little outside the box, and we're not opposed to a nursing facility because it's right there where we are, okay? It's on the other side of the Nansman Bridge. It's where the horse farm is, next to St. Andrews. And it's a hundred-bed facility, but this committee and this commission needs to look at, it's public services, it's a wastewater line, and we want to try to overcome problems, okay? It's a wastewater main from HRSD that ends just north of the project, that the rest of it's on gravitational. And most importantly, the traffic safety issues, okay? Because it is a residential facility. It's a hundred new residents, plus their staff of a hundred and twelve at least, over, you know, cycles, right, and an entire staff, coming and going from there. But in two thousand and four, this could not be cured, okay? So I'm asking you to please consider, please, Mayor, have a discussion, please, interim city manager, talk amongst yourselves, because it is a very unique situation that it appears we have an application on the table for a hundred-bed nursing facility. It's between those two bridges that we've been fighting to be able to get the money for, right, for expansion. They were supposed to be four-sided. But the problem that came up in two thousand and six for the conditions on a rezoning next to St. Andrews of one parcel for office institutional was that it was part of the Governor's Point total plan, right, to step in, right when we were fresh out of adopting the UDO. And they had no plan at all. It was not designated for an actual economic development use. He just asked, along with the beautiful shops that are at the front of Governor's Point there, to have it rezoned. And Mr. Lewis, you can go back and look at the videotape from two thousand and four. He said, no, there isn't a cure for this right now. We might be able to do the intersection, you know, that they're doing now, twenty years later, but there's no way to turn into and out of that property without doing some lane lengthening, and that might not be everything. Does that make sense? It's a six-hundred-and-thirty-two-page application, ladies and gentlemen. If it pleases the developer, and if it sits well at the pleasure of our council, an agreement to allow them to present it before the planning commission as one of the special presentations is why I'm here tonight, because you're going to see in the public comments that our community didn't know how else to ask. Like, we want to collaborate with this entire situation, but the same problem is still with us twenty years later, that the turn-in-turn-out from now twice the size property, right? The horse farm needs to come for rezoning, the original office in institutional, and it's the same traffic issue, but now there's thirty thousand cars per day. So I'm actually, didn't ask the developer, I was supposed to go there today. I got really bad news, right when I was supposed to go take a tour over at a facility, and I apologize, but I couldn't make it here tonight. I had somebody drive me, okay? That we want to collaborate with people who bring applications. We know the problems because it was the same problems twenty years ago, okay, for that same property. And if it fits with you or some other device to allow them to give their greatest minds in Suffolk, our people, yourselves, and the planning commission, a better look at it, why should we not? So that is my thanks to you for allowing me to come forward, why you will see public comments asking for the special, you know, land use consideration, special presentation. And again, I haven't had a chance to talk to the developer directly about that, but if it's available and they agree, I think it should be afforded to them and the community. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Okay. We'll now move to new business. Madam Clerk, do we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
Yes, sir. We have a motion to nominate Clark Cooper to the Paul DeCamp Community College Board.
Counsel? Council member Williams? Got a motion for approval from council member Williams. Do I have a second? Council member Johnson?
Second.
Second from council member Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, kindly record the vote.
The motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Do we have any other new business to bring forward this evening? Hearing none, we'll move to announcements and comments, and at this time, I'll ask if the communications department has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager. I'll start the announcements off with a reminder that the city of Suffolk will observe the Election Day holiday on Tuesday, November fourth, and city offices will be closed. Normal operations will resume on Wednesday, November fifth, at eight-thirty A.M. Trash and recycling will operate on their normal schedules. Also, Suffolk Transit will offer a free fair day to help ensure voters have every opportunity to reach their polling locations. The city of Suffolk, in partnership with the Hampton Road Sanitation District, would like to advise motorists of the installation of a sanitary sewer pipe on College Drive. This work will require a detour lane shift of the westbound lane on College Drive between the southbound exit eight ramp off the I six-sixty-four and the traffic circle. Please note that the entrance and exit of Point Place will remain closed during construction. The detour is currently in place and will continue through the end of February twenty twenty-six. For more information, visit hrsd.com. Keep Suffolk Beautiful and the Suffolk Art League are thrilled to announce that vendor applications are now open for the twenty twenty-six Suffolk Earth and Arts Festival. This event will take place on Saturday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-six, from ten A.M. to four P.M. on Main Street in historic downtown Suffolk. Vendors who apply by January twelfth can take advantage of an early bird special, receiving a twelve-by-twelve booth for only one hundred dollars. After January twelfth, the booth fees go up to one hundred and fifty. And the final deadline for all vendors is March ninth. Interested vendors can apply online at sufficvaearthandartsfestival.com. Suffolk Tourism is excited to announce that author applications are now available for the twenty twenty-six Suffolk, Virginia Authors Festival. This one-day event is scheduled for Saturday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-six, at the Hilton Garden Inn Suffolk Riverfront. The application deadline is Friday, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Author selected for the twenty twenty-six Suffolk, Virginia Authors Festival will be notified via email by Friday, December fifth. To apply as a featured author, go to sufficvaauthorsfestival.com to submit your application. The city of Suffolk Parks and Rec Library and Tourism Departments have several Halloween-themed events happening this month, from spooky movies and festivals, music festivals, to dance parties, and even driver days this weekend. Take a look at your screen, there is something for everyone, and I'll highlight just a few. Friday Night Frights movie series featuring The Forest is playing at Suffolk Center on October twenty-fourth at eight P.M. For the kids, Fright Night at the Rec Center will be hosted at all three Rec Center locations on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from six to eight P.M. And something for the older kids, Hollow Teen on October twenty-ninth at six P.M. at the North Suffolk Library. And a Halloween-inspired litter cleanup at the Nansman Suffolk Brewing Station on Saturday, October twenty-fifth at three P.M. Check out all of these Halloween-themed events and more at sufficva.us. The Suffolk, the city of Suffolk Public Safety Committee would like to remind all citizens of the Public Safety Portal. This online platform empowers our citizens to share their suggestions on community safety improvements and public safety matters. Users of the portal are also, also have the option to submit anonymously. We do want to remind residents, however, that this portal is not intended for reporting criminal activity, and in the event of an emergency, to please dial nine-one-one. For more information on the Public Safety Committee and the portal, visit sufficva.us. And before we end tonight, I would like to share a moment to celebrate one of Suffolk's most beloved traditions, the Suffolk Peanut Festival. Despite all of the rain, this year's festival brought our community together for a weekend full of fun, food, and family-friendly entertainment. From the lively parade and thrilling rides to the local vendors and musical performances, it was truly a showcase of everything that makes Suffolk special. Take a look back at some of the highlights from this year's event. And of course, on your screen are the various ways residents can stay connected to the city of Suffolk happenings. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Okay, we'll now move on to announcements from council. I'm sorry.
The meeting with the schools. Okay, on the new business? Okay. Okay. I thought we had to make a motion.
Yeah, we didn't do that because they can't meet that day, so we're going to have to reschedule. So we can't make a motion without a date, and we don't have a date until we have something agreed upon.
Okay.
So that's why that didn't happen.
We didn't know that.
Nobody did.
Okay.
Okay, let's go back to announcements and comments from council. Council member Butler Barlow. Hold it, let me push the little button here. It's not a button. There, you're good.
Sorry about that. We were a step behind.
Well, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. I want to say, I got invited, this is my highlight of my city council tenure, I got invited to judge a pumpkin dessert contest at the Pumpkin Fest in Critten Eclipse. It was a great event, good turnout, great community event, brand-new, first year. So thank you to Rosehill Heritage Farm for inviting me. The sheriff and I provided the tasting and the judging, and really, I can't imagine a better, if you like pumpkin, it was a good event. So appreciate the invitation to do that, and anytime I can eat desserts, I'm all in. The only other thing I really want to say is Wesley Chapel United Methodist Church in Chuck Tuck, Virginia, is celebrating a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five years of faith and service to the community, and I just want to say congratulations. I've been a small part of it for, not the whole hundred and seventy-five years, but for the last thirty anyway. And it's quite a milestone, and looking forward to the celebration. Just want to say, you know, best wishes, and hope that we can continue to serve the community for years to come. And with that, I'll say good night.
Council member Bennett?
I'd like to start out by saying, Peanut Fest was really nice this year, a lot of activity going on out there, and even though the rain came around latter part of the week, but I think Friday, Friday night, I think people thoroughly enjoyed themselves. I did. Saw a lot of friends and family, and even the grandkids came home this weekend from college to want me to take them to the Peanut Fest from college, so they came home. She was peanut queen last year, so she wanted to come back and see some of her friends, and they came home the weekend. I thoroughly enjoyed them. Also, I didn't get a chance to, wasn't able to go to Bishop Valo Parker's homegoing, and I want to say to Mount Joy Church, my condolences to them and the Parker family. Bishop Parker was a dear friend of mine, and I know she will definitely be missed in the community. With that, I'll say good night.
Okay, council member Johnson?
You're doing good so far. I'd like to say thank you to the Peanut Fest Committee and everyone who participated. Sometimes we forget how important this is to our community, but the little kids out there and the ones that say, my child would never miss it, we're going to be there no matter what. That's what it's about. So thank you to the Peanut Fest Committee. And I don't typically do this, but we lost a member of our community, one hundred years old. She's not long past it, but she lived to one hundred years old, and that was Ms. Lydia Harrell. And to the Harrell family, I'd just like to send our condolences. The arts and cultural district, wow, I don't think any of us quite get how exciting it is. This is something that is going to be so unique to us, for a small rural city to do this. I'm excited. I'm excited for our people, for the people that live here. It's a wonderful thing. I'd like to also thank the staff and our mayor for putting on the council retreat. We all got quite a bit from it. We were able to talk in an open forum, and that's an amazing thing for this council because you can't talk except in an open forum. So it was a great time. It was great. We learned a lot, and I think we accomplished a great deal. And with that, I'll say thank you and good night.
Council member Wright? See where you are here. Hold on one second. Okay. I think they took you off the screen. Oh, there it is.
Good evening. So October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so I just want to remind people that preventative care is self-care and it saves lives. In the Sleepy Hole Borough, we have an upcoming info session for the driver community. It is October twenty-ninth at six P.M., and the staff will provide an update on the demolition It is October 29th at 6 p.m., and the staff will provide an update on the demolition of Driver Elementary and results from the traffic and safety study. The second-to-last thing I have is a reminder that Election Day is November 4th, and that early voting ends on Saturday, November 1st, so cast your votes. And my quote that we're saying for the evening is, "As we move into the heart of fall, remember, autumn shows us how beautiful it is to let things go." With that, I'll say good night.
Counselmember Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to congratulate the Assessors' Office for all their well-deserved awards that we learned about during the work session. As the mayor said, it really goes to show you how far that department has come in the last four or five years, and all I can say is just keep up the good work. Thank you for what you do. And then also to the planning staff for being Planning Month and all the great stuff that you do. I know that, you know, y'all sometimes catch a lot of heat because you have a very narrow lane that the planning department is allowed to walk in, and depending on whether it's a popular project or an unpopular project, depends a lot on how they feel about you at the time. But you guys do a great job. As the liaison to the Planning Commission, I attend a lot of the Planning Commission, and usually the first words out of all the presenter's mouth is, "I want to thank the planning department for their professional handling of our application," and I think that speaks a lot. I want to thank the speakers that came up and spoke this evening. Mr. Webb, one of the items that we did talk about during our retreat was affordable housing. We maybe didn't get into it into the depth that we should have, but I think everybody on this dais recognizes that there's certainly a need for the affordable housing. I don't think there's anybody in the Commonwealth of Virginia, or the United States for that matter, that doesn't recognize the need for it. And I think we do recognize that it's, in order to make it work here in Suffolk, on some level, it's going to have to be a public-private partnership, whether that comes in the form of helping with the connection fees if it's a new construction or other means. But I agree, it is going to have to, it's going to require some creativity on our part to make it happen if we're serious about it. And let's see, I want to thank, you know, the fellow councilpeople for the retreat. It was a good retreat. I think we got a lot of things talked about and a lot of things accomplished. And then lastly, if you're not doing anything tomorrow night, at Oakland Christian Church, the Sister Cities is having their annual chili cook-off, and I will be featuring what is referred to in my family as Uncle Paul's Chili. So if you would like to come and taste Uncle Paul's Chili, please come to the Oakland Christian Church tomorrow night, and with that, I'll say good night.
Counselmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I would like to thank the mayor, city staff, for very productive, informative, and informative. City council retreat last week, it was right on point. We covered a lot, and I'm just looking forward to us implementing some of the things that we discussed. I'm really going to be brief tonight. My word of the month is furtherance and its encouragement of the progress or growth or acceptance of something. And with that, I'll say good night.
Vice Mayor Ward.
Yes, sir. I attend, we, a couple of other councilmen went to Roanoke, and like you said, some of the things that's going on all around the state of Virginia, you have a good conversation with some of the towns and the cities. But one of the things I really noticed about Roanoke, just about the second or third time I went there, and the downtown is completely different when it first started. I mean, it's completely different. And well, it seemed like we always talking about downtown, but I think that we got to know what do we want really in our downtown, because you look at some of the places that we did go to, Austin, Texas, and Roanoke, Charlotte, their downtown is much different than 10 or 15 years ago. So hopefully, we do the right thing, and everybody get on board in how they really want our downtown to look. The next thing about Huntersville, we had our first civic league in the new firehouse, and it went great, and I appreciate some of the candidates coming and talking, so it was kind of good. And like I said, the community of Huntersville is real proud of that firehouse. And I also had, like, to give my condolences to Mrs. Parker. She was a fine preacher, minister, and a pastor at church, and we couldn't make it because we were also Roanoke. And Mr. Webb, I've heard you talk, and I would like to sit down and talk to you because affordable housing is important, and a lot of time you go at something, but certain people can't afford or have know-how, how to get things done, so maybe I can sit and talk with you about that. With that, then, I want to say this here, and I mean it from my heart. You get on council, people look for you to make decisions, and some of the decisions are hard, but I can say this, in the last 14 and 15 years or so, I've been on council, and the only thing I did, try to make the right decision for the city of Suffolk, not for myself, not for any other reason, for the right decision. And I want to keep doing that, what I feel is right, and where the city, well, not only that, where some of the people in my borough would like to see the city go. Not only just that, but the whole city of Suffolk. And I think that that's very important to me. It don't have to be that important to others, but it's very important to me. And a lot of decisions, you might not like what I say, or how I say it, or how I vote, but get used to it. God bless you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. If I won't, I'll try to be as brief as I can, or be quick anyhow. I'll start with recognizing the Assessors' Office for their accomplishments. It was no small task, and this was a national organization, not Hampton Roads, not Commonwealth of Virginia, but to receive the Distinguished Assessment Jurisdiction Award for Excellence in Assessments is just awesome. Thank you for that. You're serving our citizens well. We talked about the Cultural Arts District. Actually, we didn't talk about it. We passed an ordinance creating that, and I think that's going to do wonders to be in our little toolbox here to continue to attract growth in downtown, continue to revitalize downtown. I want to thank the staff, as I did during the presentation, for putting the ordinance together, but also the Downtown Advisory Board for continuing to offer their input. The MUD regulations we discussed today, to bring back again to address some of the issues we've had with our mixed-use developments. Event-wise, obviously, everybody talked about Peanut Fest. I did go to the Queen's banquet, and I want to, you know, recognize the young ladies who were selected to be on the Queen's Court and also the Queen herself. It's always a great event. Pearls and bow ties, I went to that ribbon cutting over on Washington Street, 506 East Washington Street. Very welcome addition. The outside of that building really doesn't do the inside any justice, because the inside is nice. I mean, it's set up to do events. It's in a great place where we need to continue to promote growth, and they've made it. I want to thank them for their investment. Reverend Dr. Ben Fitzgerald, I went to an event at the Virginia Beach Convention Center along with Councilmember Wright and Councilmember Rector, celebrating his elevation to bishop. I don't know, short of a coronation or inauguration or something, it was over the top. That's all I could say. There was no stone left unturned, and I was more than impressed with what was going on, a great representation. Peanut Fest Parade, awesome and normal. State of the Region over at Old Dominion, Councilmember Rector went to that also. Lot of numbers, a little boring for about an hour and a half, but what I did get out of it is, we need more houses. I mean, it's one of the things they talked about specifically, is the housing shortage. And the great thing about all these houses is great, but then we got to discuss where we're going to put them, because any time we go to put houses somewhere, it creates issues with schools, issues with roads. We don't know what the fiscal impact is, so, you know, the can of worms just keeps on rolling. So like everything else, we got to just, we got to make decisions, pros and cons, and everything's not real easy. You know, we can talk one side of it, but then we got to consider the other side, because if you don't consider the other side, we're in trouble. Shrimp Feast, awesome. It was jammed up, weather was perfect. I want to thank all my fellow rural attends for their hard work. I didn't cook any shrimp on Thursday now, but they did a great job, and it's just always been a good event, and I've been doing it for about 45 years or so, and I appreciate everybody attending that. Saturday, there was an event at the Hilton Garden, the community leaders lunch that Dr. Lisa Burrell put together. Once again, it was an awesome event, and we had two councilmembers there that were recognized, Councilmember Wright and Councilmember Williams, for their contributions to their community. Suffolk was very well-represented, out of about five, I think it was a total of five, six, and that was from a rather large area also. And I will continue to butcher this church's name, Gassamani, is that right?
Gassamani, yes.
Gassamani, yeah, I said it right once. You know, I was there, and I had to speak, and I messed it up about five times. Finally, I just skipped the whole Gassamani thing and just said "the church," and that worked out just fine. And I sat down, and my wife looked at me, she said, "Boy, did you butcher that." I said, "Yeah, you're right." Mental blocks. And that's pretty much it. I'll finish up with the quote of the night, which was, is, was by, was by Steve Jobs, who was the CEO of Apple, passed away in 2011, and that quote is, pretty short one, it says, "The ability to make tough decisions defines your leadership." And with that, I will say good evening and ask for a motion to adjourn. And we have Councilmember Wright.
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion adjourned. Councilmember Wright, Councilmember Williams.
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilmember Williams. Anybody want to discuss that? I didn't think so. All councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.